Good evening. Good evening, everyone. If you could join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll begin the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Roll call, Nikki, please.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Hill?
Here.
Mrs. Hopper?
Here.
Mr. Schindler?
Here.
Dr. Cieratino?
Here.
Mr. Seltzer?
Here.
Mr. Todd?
Here. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education call for a closed session on February 19th, 2020 at Parkway Central Middle School following the regular meeting for the purpose of considering: One, legal actions, causes of actions or litigation involving the district and any confidential privileged communication between the district or its representatives and its attorneys, 610.021.1. Two, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by the district when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded, 610.021.3. Three, preparation, including any discussions or work product on behalf of a public governmental body or its representatives for negotiations with employee groups, 610.021.9. And four, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, 610.021.13.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please, Nikki.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Dr. Cieratino?
Yes.
Mr. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes, motion carries 7-0. Once again, good evening, everyone. This evening, the Board of Education is recognizing our foreign exchange students. In addition, we're also honoring an exceptional group of Parkway students who earned All-State Music Honors during the All-State Festival Conference at the Missouri Music Educators Conference in late January. We will also recognize two Parkway teachers who recently received awards, and in addition, the Board of Education apparently will be honored as well. First, I would like to introduce Amy Belding, Coordinator of Career and Technical Education, Global Studies and World Languages, to join us at the podium.
President Todd, Board members, Dr. Marty, Mrs. Dover, it is with great pleasure that I get to introduce a group of students who have traveled far away to spend a school year in Parkway, in Parkway, where we actually actively promote international understanding and global awareness among young people from this country and from other countries by hosting exchange students. Not only is this experience a lifetime change for our exchange students and their host families, but this journey helps our community. It helps us understand what being a global citizen really means and how we can broaden our perspectives on the pathway to becoming globally competent. This year, we have welcomed an overwhelming number, 20 exchange students in Parkway from 18 different countries. Exchange students, thank you for taking the leap to spend a year in Parkway. We are really grateful and honored to have you with us. When I call your name, will you please step forward to shake hands with our board? Host families, will you please stand when your student is called so that we can recognize you as well? I'd like to invite Dr. Diggs up here to recognize the South High students.
Thank you. It is an honor and a pleasure to be the liaison for Parkway South High School, working with these young people as they have left their home countries to visit with us and to be a part of this amazing experience. So thank you for allowing me to be with you. So without further ado, not in any particular order, may I have Niels Kruger from Germany, Sayed Tahir from Pakistan, Luna Moschelin from Italy, also Osenu Dikidit from Mali. Also, there are a few that weren't able to join us this evening. We have Chun Pei Yan from Taiwan, Yume Kushima from Japan, as well as Mabel Zirgengil from Brazil. All right, thank you.
Okay. Our next student, Simon Beer, is at Central High School, and he is sick, so he's not here, but do want to mention his name. Next, we have Georgia Bianchi from Italy. We have Hans Kolon from Germany. Julian Couturier, sorry if I mispronounced that, from France. Yume Kushima from Japan. Kimberly Kepler from Germany. Victoria Okana, and I'm not sure, what country are you from? I didn't have that on my list. Spain, from España, thank you. Gracias. We have Carlado Su- Shuk from North High, who's not here tonight, I don't think, and then Tamara Vandanian from Armenia. Nelson Worm, who is sick tonight, but we'll recognize him as well. And Angela Abraham from Bulgaria. Students, if you want to go ahead and take a stand over there so we can get your picture, all the students that we recognize, and did I miss anybody from the list? Okay. Just one big round of applause for our host families. Thank you so much. Thank you, Board, for your support.
Next, I'd like to introduce Jeff Lackey, Coordinator of Fine Arts, and he will be recognizing our All-State Music students.
Good evening, President Jeff Todd, Vice President Debbie Hopper, members of our Board of Education, Dr. Marty, Ms. Dover, and all others present this evening. It's with great honor I get to introduce 22 extremely talented and dedicated Parkway High School musicians who have achieved the distinction of having been selected to perform for the 2020 Missouri All-State Band Choir or Orchestra. Auditions for this group positions are serious and very competitive. The students first had to be selected to perform at their local ensemble prior to being selected at the state. Their auditions had to be performed with technical skill and understanding that made them stand out from hundreds of other students, all competing across the state for the same various seats. Naturally, they went on to represent Parkway well in their prospective concerts, which were performed for the Missouri Music Educators Conference before an appreciative audience of music educators, administrators, and parents. These Parkway students have demonstrated the highest level of musical competency and have shown a personal commitment to artistic excellence. I'd like to thank their music teachers for motivating, nurturing, and guiding these students into the skilled and accomplished musicians they are today, and of course, would like to thank their parents for their continued support and motivation along the way. So now, I'd like to introduce the All-State Music students by school to be recognized by the Parkway Board of Education and Dr. Marty. I'd ask that they would join their principal and music teachers that are present tonight to be photographed to the side after that. So we'll start with Central High. Our All-State Orchestra students from Central High on bass, we have Colby Heimberger. Cynthia Hugh on violin II. Irina Sam- Samsonova on violin II. Sydney Scarlett on violin I. Mary Su on violin I. And Ellie Yang on violin I. Also from Central High, two All-State Choir students. Alto alternate Olivia Limbaugh. And tenor Charlie Schaefer. From North High, All-State Orchestra, we had Jay Lipsitz on viola. From North High, two All-State Choir members, we had tenor Micah Schwartz. And bass Eric Curry. We also had All-State Jazz member, that was an honorable mention, but we'd like to mention here, was trumpet Oliver Buckley. South High Orchestra, we had on viola Linnea Johansson, who I don't think was able to be here. And then alternate Jason Zang. Also from South High, we had an All-State Choir member, bass Devon Polk. From West High School, we had a few All-State Choir members. We had on bass Charlie Foy. Bass Ronan Ryan. Tenor Nolan Barber. Supranal Arden Dixon. And All-State Orchestra from West High was Neon, I'm sorry, Nayan Ryu on cello. West High also had two honorable mentions for All-State Band, and they were, I'm sorry, I'm going to say this wrong, Kealan Legler on bassoon. And then Agen Seewall on trombone. Again, thank you to our 22 All-State musicians from the 2020 school year. So moving on, we had an honor, and I'd like to invite up here to the podium Amy Gossett, our theater teacher from West High. Established in 1988 and renamed in 1993, the Missouri Thespians Judith Rethwitch Educator of the Year Award is annually presented to the Missouri, or by the Missouri Thesbian Organization, to a deserving teacher who exemplifies the best qualities of a teacher within their building, district, and community, as well as the very best as a theater educator. This year, the Missouri Thespians named our very own Amy Gossett from West High as the Judith, I'm going to say this wrong, Rethwitch Educator of the Year. And we'd like to read a couple statements that were in her recommendation, if you don't mind. So, "Amy provides opportunities for students that grow as artists, strives to find outside events and experiences that provide additional knowledge, provides educational growth in many areas outside of the theater." But I'd like to read the second-to-last paragraph in one of the recommendation letters, which speaks to Amy's character as we've gotten to know her as her staff members. Yet finally, I think it's her support for students struggling mentally, emotionally, or needing to find a space that truly sets her apart. There have been countless times when Amy has graciously given her planned time to listen to students discuss their personal problems. She also proactively speaks to parents, counselors, and principals to ensure that students are supported. She fully understands that the work she does cannot possibly be useful to students who do not feel welcome, safe, or mentally healthy enough to participate. Her deep empathy for all her students makes her perhaps one of the most impressive educators I have ever seen. Thank you to Amy, and congratulations. I also have the privilege of doing one more honor tonight. If I can invite Keeley O'Hara Bellin from South Middle Band, teacher. Parkway South Middle Band has been honored with the Advocacy in Action Silver Award for Outstanding Community Engagement for Music for All Incorporated, a national organization that provides the importance of music in schools. To qualify for this Advocacy in Action Award designation, the Parkway South Middle Band submitted its project, called "A Community of Lifelong Music Makers." This submission highlighted their community band that brings together students, parents, and faculty-staff members in the area. All of the submissions were received by a national panel of educators, administrators, and community-based business leaders, and Parkway South Middle School Band, Community Band, was awarded Silver in Community Engagement and is one of only 41 schools recognized from across the nation. We'd like to congratulate Parkway South Middle School Bands, and a special thanks, or thank you, to Keeley, for your leadership engagement and helping bring the Parkway community into making music. Thank you very much.
Next, I think we'll have Dr. Marty at the podium, and we will sit.
I know a lot of people are leaving, but I want to pass on my congratulations to our students and staff tonight. We're in the season, from now until the end of the year, recognizing student achievement and staff, and it's a wonderful time of the year. So thank all of you, congratulations. Have a great evening, and a lot of you have to leave. For those of you still here and our Board of Education, last week, February 9th to the 15th, was designated School Board Recognition Week by the Missouri School Board Association. Missouri School Board Association supports school boards from all over the state of Missouri. While we are a week late in recognizing our board, we should be thankful and appreciative of their work, not just during last week or this week, but throughout the whole school year. Much is written about the necessity of characteristics of board members and the traits of outstanding school boards and how they work together. Here are some examples of those studies, research, and observers who have watched boards around the country. I want to just point out that these are what people who, again, are studying boards and talk about strong boards, and then we'll talk about our board and how they match up with some of these. Ethical and trustworthy, boards certainly are trusted with the public trust and expected to certainly hold us as administrators and educators accountable for our work, and they too must certainly be held accountable for their work. Boards that are student-focused, always putting students first in decision-making, I think, are very effective boards. Boards have to be accountable to the public, specifically for student achievement and the use of public resources. Effective boards advocate and are cheerleaders for public education, and what an important time it is for us to have people that are supporting public education at a time where sometimes there's a lot of cynics and critics for it. Effective boards are mission-directed. They're not directed by their desires or individuals or groups, but by the mission, in this case, of the Parkway School District. Effective boards are team-oriented. Best boards don't have any one individual whose voice is more important than the others. They all work together and respect one another. Effective boards are strategic. They're future-oriented, looking out for the long term, not just the short term, of the education in their community. Effective boards are innovative. They're creative in meeting the needs of students, use of resources, and again, thinking out of the box when that is necessary. Effective boards are service-oriented. I want you to know, if you're not aware, that our board, and boards in Missouri, serve without compensation, so they're not paid for their service. They're truly service-oriented. And finally, effective boards focus on all, promoting equity so that all are successful and achieving in school, not just certain individuals, but all. Well, I believe these 10 traits are characteristics and are present in the Parkway Board of Education. I have the opportunity to work with these seven individuals on a regular basis, not just in meetings, but in committee meetings, weekly planning meetings, and I'm proud to serve with them as they truly do embrace what we in Parkway believe in our mission and what good board characteristics are. I truly enjoy working with this group of citizens, as they are really a team with the Parkway administrative team, but also with all our educators. They work on behalf of students and educators in this community, day in and day out. I want you to join me in thanking our board and congratulating them for their outstanding results and service. We are truly blessed to have such an effective, outstanding, and again, service-oriented board, which really has made Parkway what it is. We have a tradition of strong boards, and I just want to tell you, this is among the best that I've worked with. Let's give our board a round of applause. This is going to be a long night, so they're going to be busy, not only with a session publicly, but we have a closed session, but that's just characteristic of this board. Again, for my team, for my personally, thank you, Board of Education. Thank you.
I guess, right now, we'll take just a real quick recess, and we'll resume the meeting shortly. I think we are ready to resume. Next up, we have several additions, corrections, and/or modifications to the agenda tonight. 6.01, we have addendum to Agenda Item 10.08, Approval of Personnel Items. 6.02, we have addition of updated contract to Agenda Item 10.13, Approval of Step Team Competition in Dallas, Texas, March 27th, 29th, 2020. 6.03, addition of updated contract to Agenda Item 10.20, Approval of Corporate Sponsorship Blue Chip Pest Control. And 6.04, update to Agenda Item 10.26, Approval of Purchase of New Buses for Transportation. Next, we have, let's see, I believe we have two citizen statements this evening, and I will ask you, I'll state your name and ask you to step to the podium, and then let me just read this before we begin this section, and that is, "We provide an opportunity at each meeting for citizen comment in an effort to maintain an open and respectful dialogue with our community. Due to privacy laws protecting student and employee information, no personally identifiable information may be shared. Also, due to time constraints and the need to complete the primary responsibilities of our meeting agenda, we cannot respond during the meeting, so you will receive a response from us in writing. We are always available to have an open dialogue outside of our meetings and can be reached by email or phone using our contact information on the Parkway website." by email or phone using our contact information on the Parkway website." Our speakers will each have two minutes in which to share their thoughts, and if either of them have any materials they'd like to share with the board, please give them to the Board Secretary Nikki Stover, and she will see that we each get a copy. So, right now, may I have, I'm going to not pronounce this correctly, Virginia Gurnally? Did I come close? Well, say it for me, so I know. Gurnally, okay. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Virginia Gurnally, and I have a brief statement that I'd like to make about the district's bullying policies and procedures. So, poet Anne Sexton wrote about her child, "Bone at my bone, you drink my answers in." Children do drink our answers in. So, when a six-year-old drinks in answers to questions like, "Don't they believe me? Why don't they do anything?", maybe we should consider the current policies and procedures related to bullying and harassment. My academic background lends to the belief that the best organizations have strong policies to fall back on. Investigations of alleged bullying are currently limited, in some cases, to the principal. I ask that the board consider involving others inside and outside the organization, and expanding the process for investigation. Also, I urge the board to ensure all victims of bullies are protected and that inappropriate actions are addressed, no matter what the situation is of the alleged bully. So, if a child is traumatized and bullies another child, it's not okay, even though the child is doing the bullying, maybe dealing with some trauma as well. All children should be protected. Also, and I just said this, I urge the board to ensure all victims of bullies are protected and that inappropriate actions are addressed. Please consider instilling a policy about retaliation against those who speak up. Just because there is not a witness does not mean a violation did not occur. The policy may also address repeat offenders, if it were to be improved. That's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next up, I have John Clay.
How you all doing?
Good evening.
My name is John Clay, and I work over at Henry Elementary, which I'm quite sure all, every last one of you all, received an email and a hard copy from me prior, correct? And it was during the situation with that sewage that the kids was exposed to, and none of you took the initiative to me to let these parents know that their kids have been exposed to that raw sewage. That's considered a universal precaution cleanup. Don't you know that that sewage can kill those kids? From the time that happened to the end of the school year, those kids constantly have been getting sick. Coming into the new beginning of the school year, those kids constantly have been getting sick. But you all seem to sweep everything under the rug instead of bringing it to the forefront. And far as what this little lady just said over here about harassment and retaliation and bullying, we have a HR department, lower management department, that does the same thing. I've been going through this, going on a year and a half. That being said, you all knew about majority of it. Dr. Marty, you even received emails from me. Amy Joyce, Phil, and that Chelsea, that's the worst HR department I ever seen in my entire life, and I've been working for a long time. I started working at the age of 14, never seen a management department like that nowhere. And you got that Amy Joyce, she's the worst one, because she manipulates everything. She lies about everything.
Okay, we can't, we can't.
Okay. I didn't know that you.
Personally identifiable information.
Okay, well, that being said, when all said and done, when we report it to you all, we're looking for you all to come in and try to correct the problem, not make the problem worse. It seems like to me you all sweep it all under the rug and let it be. But that doesn't take care of the problem. That doesn't solve the problem. When you all said and done, that problem's still there.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Okay, next, may I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education as scheduled for February 19th, 2020.
Summit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Next regular board meeting will take place on Wednesday, March 11th, 2020, beginning at 7:00 PM at Central Middle School. Next, we will move on to board liaison reports.
All right, I will share just two things tonight. The first one being, I had a Parkway North junior student reach out to me, thinking that I had some knowledge to impart upon her, and she wanted to meet with me to discuss a project she had through the engineering strand with Spark. She is working on a capstone project to do an affordable eco-home. So, I got a chance to go to Chesterfield Mall, go to our Spark program there, and meet with her and discuss how to make a green home affordable, which was really fun. But then I also got the chance to also walk around and see some other projects going on in the engineering strand, and the things that I saw included a high-speed drone they're working on, a six-axis robot arm, I didn't know you can even do this, underwater robot contests, and then building a bridge out of certain kinds of wood to compete how much weight it could hold. So, it was very impressive, and I had a great time talking to the student and giving my limited knowledge on green building for her. And then the second one is Debbie and I, this past Monday, went to Jeff City as part of Missouri School Board Association Lobbying Day. It's always an experience to go to Jeff City. I'm grateful we did have four sit-down meetings and one hallway meeting with legislators from the area, and the fact that there is a lot of bills out there with education attached to it, ranging from charter to voucher to property tax to even lowering the age to a board member to 21 in the state of Missouri. So, a lot of things are going on in Jeff City right now, so I encourage you to follow what's going on, get involved, because public schools, Dr. Marty alluded to it earlier, we do serve all, and the other piece too is we're accountable, and this is one of the forms we are accountable to the community, and all kids deserve that opportunity to be accountable and have authority over them that can actually be transparent to them too. So, there's a lot going on, and I encourage you to get involved, and I'm sure Debbie will say a few words, too.
I determined that I can't talk about everything I did in the past month, because there was really a lot, so I'm going to focus on a couple of things. I attended, actually, several different arts-related events this month, got to go to the West Area Art Show, and was just so impressed by the quality of the work our students are doing. I also attended two different all-district music performances, the all-district elementary choir and the all-district fourth-grade strings. And I'd like to talk a little bit about the elementary choir, because those students who are selected from fourth and fifth grade across the district actually got to work with a guest conductor and composer. His name is Philip Woodmore. He is from the St. Louis area, used to teach in Rockwood, and has now traveled all over the world with the music that he's composed, including the score for a play called "Antigone in Ferguson." And when he worked with our students, they actually essentially did the world premiere of one of his new pieces that he is going to publish, and I just thought that was absolutely wonderful. He wrote it for them, they performed it, he's later going to publish it. So, our kids did a world premiere. You've got to love that. The fourth-grade strings concert was great, because I always appreciate our strings program, being an old strings kid myself. The other things I participated in that I thought were really important, Jeff, Debbie, and I did a board chat in association with the all-district vocal concert. We had four community members come, two of them are here tonight, and I just encourage all citizens to come to these chats when they're available, because it's a much better place to be able to talk to you than in an atmosphere like this, where we have an agenda that we need to get through. We're going to be doing another one, I believe, in association with the all-district art show that's coming up, and so that will be an opportunity to talk to several board members. Finally, yesterday, I attended the finance committee meeting with Jeff, and we had a really great presentation from Jason Rooks, our chief information officer, on all that the district is doing in the area of cybersecurity and student data privacy. This district holds a lot of valuable data, and unfortunately, there are people who may try to get at it, and we have a world-class technology department that makes sure that does not happen. I learned a lot yesterday about things that I know nothing about, but I came away from that meeting feeling really good about the way this district is making sure that our data is safe and that our students are safe.
The only thing I'll mention is the Parkway-Rockwood Community Ed Summer Expo that was held a couple of weeks ago, which, for elementary parents and working parents, figuring out what summer's going to look like is certainly a challenge. So, having kind of a one-stop-shop with so many vendors of summer camps available to kind of talk to, get information, gather information was really a great, it's a great service to the community, and I know a lot of parents that were really grateful for it. So, thanks for doing that.
So, this month, I also attended the fourth-grade all-district strings concert with Pam. It was a wonderful performance. It's just, there's something about seeing 400 kids playing in unison, and that's wonderful, and we have a wonderful fine arts program, but it's also really great to look around the room and see all the parental support these kids get, and all the parents that show up to support their kids, and it's a really wonderful event. It's also like 20 minutes long, so it hit my kids' attention span really well. We had the joint legislative breakfast this month, that's where Pattonville, Rockwood, and Parkway get together, the superintendents, administrators in the districts, school board members, and then elected officials whose districts overlap with those areas, and it's a very informative meeting. I have a family member who's an elected official who I made the mistake of yawning while she was presenting, so it was a good opportunity for me to be scolded publicly by my aunt in front of my colleagues. So, that was, all in all, it was a wonderful experience. The other reason I bring it up, though, is because the discussion started to veer towards some current legislation pending in Missouri affecting charter schools, and I bring this up because some of the individuals sitting on this board were very vocal at that point, particularly Pam, who did an excellent job of addressing the issue head-on with some of the Missouri legislators that are proponents of it, and I think it was a really powerful moment, and I'm proud of this board for standing up for public education in that forum. Two more items, one of them's not really as a board member, but I registered my youngest kid for kindergarten in the last month, and while I sort of, from this position, have a sort of behind-the-scenes view of the district, just the way they, the people that register the kids for kindergarten handle that process with parents, it's very welcoming, and it's a joy to be a part of that. And finally, I'm a proud member of the HR Subcommittee, and while it feels like it's been too long since our last HR Subcommittee meeting, I bring this up just to sort of applaud our HR department. They're currently undertaking an endeavor of revising the HR policies in effect, and it is a very Herculean effort. The binder we have is very, very thick, so I just want to applaud our HR department for the great work they're doing, the diligent job they're doing to make sure all of our policies are up to date.
To tag on to what Matt had said about the MSBA Legislative Forum, I learned a great deal, came back really charged up and wrote this big, long report, so if anybody wants it, we'll, I'm happy to share it. I attended two workshops. One was called "Using Data in Advocacy," and the other one was about teacher recruitment, retention, and compensation. So, we'll tap into some of that in tonight's Project Parkway report as well. I think our message is that we've got to have a good pitch when we go in to talk to legislators on advocating for public schools. They've got their great pitch for charter schools and vouchers and the reasons why they should move forward. We have to have equally strong, if not stronger, pitches for why public schools are important. So, that's the main things that I came away with that, that day. I also attended a parent forum on vaping that was at West Middle School. This is a huge topic for everybody, continuing to educate myself on it and talk with physicians and other individuals that are knowledgeable about this, and just understanding what these companies are doing in advertising to our young people, trying to convince them that this is a safe option to smoking when it is not. Nicotine and the pods contain way more nicotine than what a cigarette does. One pod of a Juul juice contains a pack of cigarettes worth of nicotine, and the addiction level that occurs as a result of this is just devastating, and it not only affects, what I learned, the lung system, but also the cardiovascular system, your heart, your blood vessels, it's just everything. And so, I just really encourage parents, get yourselves knowledgeable, talk to your childrens, please have open dialogue. I'm having open dialogue with my children almost every day, and trying to, there's also another website that I came across, which I'll share with the administration later, maybe we can post it, that came from a physician. It's just weighing very heavy on my mind, and it's just something that everybody is dealing with constantly. Along with the other musical things, I also attended Little Mermaid Junior at West Middle School, which was adorable. My dad went to it, and he said, "Where'd they get all these wonderful singers?" I said, "Dad, they go to the school." And he was like, "Wow, every single one of them are good." So, I said, you know, so it was very impressive. They were phenomenal. And with the all-district elementary choir, awesome guest conductor, very impressive, and just, he also brings a member of the police band with him, and the message there is so that young people can see a positive influence of police enforcement with them, working with them. So, that was just another wonderful trait that came along with that particular event. So, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Debbie. And I'll just add a few things. First off, I'd like to thank Dr. Marty for his remarks on behalf of the rest of the board. We equally appreciate the work that we do with you and the SAP team and everyone that we get to interact with, sometimes too often, sometimes not often enough. I know we'll be spending a lot of time together tonight. Hopefully, we'll be finished before it becomes tomorrow, but we appreciate the comments. And then I'd also like to mention a couple of things that I've done since our last board meeting. I spent a little bit of time with our PTO leadership group a few weeks ago, and that's PTO leaders that represent most of the schools across our buildings, and it's just an opportunity to get together and talk about things that work for their PTOs and bounce ideas off each other and hear what's going on at the district level. So, it's always a great event. I got to partake, basically, part of the Early Childhood Steering Committee, and we had our second meeting of the year, and we got an update as it pertained to Parents' Teachers' Program here in Parkway. As of a couple of weeks ago, our Parents' Teachers' parent educators had made 3,750 home visits thus far this year, on their way to almost double that. And out of those visits, almost 10% resulted in referrals, referrals for further health evaluations for kids, further social and emotional evaluations, and it really underscores the necessity of early childhood education, early parent education, because there's a lot of these parents who are first-time parents, and they're getting into this like we all did one time long, you know, many years ago, and we were new and didn't have all the information that we do now, and so, the couple of dozen parent educators that we have spend a lot of time during the day, during the evening, going from home to home and educating our parents here in Parkway. So, really impressed with that. And I also want to mention that MSIM 6, which passed last week, finally has a Parents' Teacher component to it, so Parkway will be pushing forward with the evolution of our program as it pertains to the requirements in MSIM 6. And then, just last weekend, I got to observe the math counts competition here in St. Louis. It's a regional competition on its way to the state level, but we had two teams out of Parkway, we had a team from Central Middle and a team from West Middle who competed, and these were teams of kids that were up at 6, 7 o'clock on a Saturday morning, because they like math. I would never have been on one of those teams, but it was impressive seeing them. I would never have been on one of those teams, but it was impressive seeing them, you know, they'd get there at 7:00, 7:15, 7:30 in the morning to prepare for this competition, and it was like going to a track meet or a, you know, a football game where the athletes are, you know, running sprints up and down the field or whatever. These kids, who are mathletes, were solving problems on their notebooks and their iPads just to get their brains moving. And so they represented Parkway very well. A number of our students finished in the top 10, 15 individually, and I think West Middle finished in second place at the team level. So it was a great showing. And then Pam and I also sat on the Student Advisory Committee this afternoon for Project Parkway. So there's a group of a dozen or two dozen kids from around the district, high school students, freshmen through seniors, and they're giving information back there. Tonight, we heard from Dr. Kevin Beckner about learning and how it is evolving in our schools and in education in the country today, and they were able to give us some feedback, specifically about the programs that we're looking to start putting in place in Parkway over the next five to 10 years, and what learning looks like as we go forward. And so their input has been very valuable as we continue to shape our curriculum going forward. So that's about all I have for tonight.
Wow, thank you, Board. Wow, a lot of activities, all the way from early childhood through the legislature and everything in between. Excuse me, I'd just like to add, I had the pleasure this morning to join Nikki Stover and Patty Bedborough at Junior Achievement. A couple of weeks ago, the Parkway community, our educators, did a bowl-a-thon, and we raised about $2,500 for Junior Achievement. We were honored today among so many other organizations and entities that support the Junior Achievement work. So many of our students benefit from the Junior Achievement facility, but also right in their schools, so we're pleased to be part of that this morning. At noon, Dr. Mark Miles and I had the pleasure to address the Chesterfield Chamber of Commerce meeting, their monthly meeting. And I have to tell you, I really enjoyed Dr. Miles, and we shared with the group the many partnerships we have. Among them, Chrissy talked about the community education and the Summer Expo. By the way, almost 3,000 people attended that.
There were a lot of people.
Couple Sundays ago, so that's grown. So we shared a lot of our work. We also talked a little bit about what's going on in the legislature and our legislative priorities, and we certainly were, we believe we promoted public education pretty well among the Chamber members today. Just while, just compliment, we have a couple of folks here tonight, STEM coordinators, who have doing, every Saturday, there's been continually their work with Normity. This week, they're going to be at Lucas Crossing. Last week, they're at JA, actually, and doing great work. I think it's 100 students from both districts, right, still? And this is the second year, so we call that STEM Saturdays through the month of February. So congratulations, Jenny Profit, Stephanie is here. Thank you, Wave, one, two, eight, and thank you for your work. And then on March 6th, 5th and 6th, 6th and 7th, is the annual STEM Fest at Southwest Middle, so they're getting geared up for that, too. So a lot of STEM activities coming up. I would just also say that, I think somebody, or Chrissy and others, mentioned about summer school activities and summer camps, that registration continues, so community members, there's a lot of things that are available for the students in the summertime. But again, Board members, thank you for all your work and support. There's a lot of activities going on in the next several weeks, plays and concerts and athletic tournaments, and we have, by the way, 60 students competing in Misha Swimming State this week from all the schools, and then I think we have wrestlers from all four of our high schools also in Columbia for the state wrestling tournament. So a lot of good, a lot of things happening around the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, we have, the next Subcommittee meeting will be the Finance Operations Subcommittee meeting, and that was actually held yesterday at 4:30 PM, which Pam and I attended, and there are no immediately upcoming Subcommittee meetings to report. So moving on to action items, we have 27 of them, and I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the February 19, 2020 Board Materials.
No movement.
Second.
Is there anything to be pulled to action or closed? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries 7-0. This evening, we have no action items, so we will move to policy review. We have a policy review of 12.01, which is FEE.bp, Selection of Design-Build Contractor. Do we have any questions for that? Next up is 12.02, Policy KL.bp, Public Complaints. Do we have any questions for that policy? We've all reviewed those policies before tonight, and they will be up for approval at the next board meeting. So next, we have the, what will probably be the heart and soul of tonight's meeting. All 84 pages of it, we have the Project Parkway 2.0 update, so I will turn it over to Dr. Marty.
Well, good evening. Unfortunately, Dr. Watson would be in front of you tonight. She's a little bit under the weather, so I'm subbing, and I'll do my best. She's probably tuning in, watching me, so she's probably critiquing my work here. Each year, and about this time, we take moments at board meetings to both talk to our public and our community about our Project Parkway 2.0 work. As you know, we're in the second generation, nearing the end of the second generation of Project Parkway. And of course, our mission, which was updated in 2016 to include the work caring and to kind of streamline our goals from six to three, certainly has been the root of the work that we've been engaged in over the last several years. Our mission certainly directs us to work every day, no matter how great or trivial the task in addressing those goals. So we have, as I mentioned, three goals to help us accomplish that mission. One surrounds students, Goal One. One, another one, certainly around staff, Goal Two, and our third goal addresses resources. Pretty important and basic to the work that we're doing here in Parkway. And by the way, when I mentioned, that was a little bit of a heart of my discussion today with Chesterfield Chamber. We each talked about, each district talked about our strategic plan. Certainly, Rockwood, too, is engaged in a strategic planning process. Well, since we updated you last, we want to talk about more work around our measurable objectives and our effort to accomplish these goals, certainly living out that mission in the work that we do each day. So we continually ask ourselves, how are we doing? Are we on track? Are we making progress? Are we doing what is best in the interest of all Parkway students? So tonight, you're going to hear in a little bit more detail, but at a high level, because as was mentioned, you have about a, I don't know, 80-page, 100-page document that these folks prepared for you in great detail. But we're going to certainly have both Kevin Beckner and Greg Matheson speak to you about Goal One, Amy Joyce and Kevin Beckner on Goal Two, and Patty Bedborough and Amy Joyce, although I'm not sure they're all going to participate, on Goal Three. Again, student focus, Goal One, staff focus, Goal Two, and resource, Goal Three. So with that, I'm going to call up, I think, is Greg going? Greg is going first. Welcome, Greg Matheson, who, by the way, I think has done a wonderful job this year in joining us and to, you know, kind of grasp all the meaning of, that was handed off to him in terms of the work of Project Parkway. So it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Matheson, our Assistant Superintendent of Student Services.
Thank you, Dr. Marty. Members of the board, Ms. Stover. Get to the right slide. All right, so, over the past year, we have increased our supports for kids and our community via several of these items. First, suicide prevention and intervention, the addition of the high school care coordinators, and for next year, the middle school care coordinator. This year, we implemented a grandparent cafe, as we saw within our community that grandparents that are raising kids had a lot of questions and needs and resources, so we have had three meetings so far to meet their needs, to help them support the students that they're raising. We have our school-wide social justice training and our school-wide trauma-informed care training, I'll talk a little bit more about. We'll get into the schools of character, Leader and Me, as well as equity training for all administrators throughout the district. We've also increased our food pantry volunteers. While we have reduced this year some key statistics, one is we've reduced out-of-school suspensions, in-school suspension, as well as discipline referrals, and we have also decreased the episodes of anaphylaxis as we have changed our policies over the last couple of years when it comes to food and nutrition inside the schools. As you know, there's a lot of buttons to click here, sorry. There we go. Character education is a cornerstone to the Parkway mission, as Dr. Marty said, as we added caring to the mission several years ago. But we know that Parkway is a district of character. We also have 12 national schools of character in Parkway School District. We have three schools that are state schools of character, and I'm sure soon we'll find out that they will be national schools of character, most likely. We should also, we also have one honorable-mentioned school, and that's West High School, and I would bet soon that they will become a state school of character as well. Each of these schools, this is a reflection of them embedding high-quality character education into their day-to-day work to meet the needs of our students. We also are, we have several schools that are Franklin Covey Lighthouse Schools. This award is presented to schools that are exemplary schools for the Leader and Me program. Parkway schools currently have, as you see on the board, four lighthouse schools that are beacons for student leadership and development. Over the past two years, we've worked diligently to help our staff be trauma-informed, really trauma-aware at this point. Trauma-informed care is a structure and framework that involves understanding, recognizing, and responding to the effects of all types of trauma. Parkway currently has 13 schools that are trauma-aware, and we will have all of our schools and staff members trained by the end of next school year. We also believe in social justice, in the whole social justice training. Equity and social justice training are essential to our schools and communities. We're proud of the work that our schools have done to ensure all students and staff are valued, affirmed, and uplifted. We currently have 14 schools that have completed intensive, student-centered training, and I really mean that. It is intensive. It gets down to the core and the heart of what you have, what you believe, and 14 of our schools and staffs have gone through that, and our plan is to have all schools train, complete that training in the next several years. Some current work and future direction, as I discussed, a couple of these are already up here, but I'd like to highlight a couple more. One is that we are, we are working with our staff, as we know, as they're working with students, on de-escalation training. We're in year two of de-escalation verbal de-escalation training, where we're teaching staff members how to work with students and help them be able to stay in the classroom through discussion and other methods. Next year, we will have all of our staff trained in verbal de-escalation. As I informed you, we're in year two of the trauma-informed care. A lot of our work has also been revolving around the Mental Health Task Force recommendations. I know in a workshop of the board, we went through a lot of those details. We've added care coordinators at high school, as mentioned, and we are next year looking to add five positions, one per each middle school, for the care coordinator role. We also are working on emergency planning for school health, staff members, in times of crisis and then also in times of pandemics, where we're taking a look at how we respond in pandemic situations. Given the current situation that is occurring with the coronavirus, we want to make sure that we are protected and our kids are protected as well. Not just that, but there's also other pieces that we're working towards. I just want to say, well, that they have that, but that's coming from our Health Services Department. A couple other things that we're working towards, current and future direction is moving to digital records. Currently, we have a lot of file folder for cumulative files on students, and we're going to be moving those to digital records in 2020. Increasing, we're increasing communication and collaboration amongst existing mental health providers within Parkway, and I mentioned our grandparent cafe. This is a brief summary of the things that we're working with for Goal One within Student Services. And now I'd like to introduce Dr. Kevin Beckner, Assistant Superintendent of TLA.
Thank you, and thank you very much. Greg and I have a great partnership around Goal One, and really thinking about the whole child, where much of Greg's work is focused on character education and how we keep students safe and make sure that they're well cared for. We also know that students need to learn and learn at a high level. Much of that work, as this board knows, is we focused on making learner-centered experiences for our students, which we have our Parkway personalized model around. Mr. Todd referenced earlier, we got a chance to speak to our high school students earlier tonight to hear about their high school experience and how we might provide a high school experience that is meaningful, relevant, valuable, and learner-centered. We heard a lot from them about things about their current experience, that they're very grateful for the Parkway learning and high-quality education they're receiving, and also would love to have more ownership and have more flexibility and have more voice in their experience. And those are some things that we are certainly working towards. So planning is underway for new programs at each level to open during the 21, 22 school year, which includes the high school program, which will be on the central campus, middle school program right here at Central Middle, and the elementary program at Sorento Springs. We recently began the hiring process for the secondary program, and had a great response from our staff, and are looking forward to identifying some fantastic teachers to work with our students in those programs. We continue to also develop our teachers around these concepts, where how do we make learning more centered around student voice and choice while maintaining high expectations, ensuring that students are learning the standards they need to, and ensuring that they have meaningful assessment that really does show their learning. So we have lots of work going on around that, including cohorts of teachers who are working on project and problem-based learning. We have development scheduled in August in partnership with the Personalized Learning Institute to continue growing our teachers' knowledge around that. And along with that, we also have been personalizing learning opportunities for staff. And I want to take a second and highlight this one in particular, because it's not only our students who deserve personalized learning experiences, but also our staff. So we heard from our teachers that they want more voice and choice into their learning. They wanted things that were targeted to what they need. They want opportunities where they don't have to just find a class to earn their in-service credits, but something that they can really find valuable. So through the work of the Professional Learning Action Team, or PLAT, led by Dr. Gerken Coats, we developed a model where staff can personalize their own professional development, which includes identifying topics that are relevant to them and their expertise or areas where they want to grow, applying that work to their classroom, looking at student results, and ultimately sharing that learning with others. And on the next few slides, I want to share some numbers that highlight some of our work around Goal One. The first being that with those personalized learning opportunities for staff, we have already had nearly one in five staff members participate in a personalized learning experience for themselves, which is amazing, given that a large number of our staff still are learning about that process, and yet we've already had nearly 20% of staff engage in that process. That means that they're learning something relevant and meaningful as educators so that they can better help our students. The second number I want to share is 23.4. In addition to looking forward and trying to innovate for our students and give them different experiences, we also know that there are things like ACT and SAT and standardized tests, and our students continue to perform well. And 23.4 was our graduate score this year on the ACT, which was our student's highest score since we began testing all juniors, and our highest score since the 2011 school year. That's a testament to the hard work that our teachers are doing, the hard work that our schools are doing to push students to engage in rigorous curriculum and coursework that prepares them for that, and really a testimony to all of our high school staff teachers, and not just high school, but everyone who came before them, middle school and elementary, to prepare them to be successful on that particular exam. The third number I want to share is actually a set of three. These three numbers represent some of our AP participation rates. We know we want students engaging in rigorous coursework. So Parkway was named to the AP Honor Roll for the fourth consecutive year this year, and the AP Honor Roll indicates that we have continued to increase access to AP coursework while at least maintaining our high level of performance. Oftentimes, when we start to increase access to challenging courses, we see scores fall as a result. Parkway has not experienced that. Again, that's a testimony to our hard work from our teachers and our staff in our schools. There were only seven schools in the state of Missouri who earned that distinction, and so we are very proud to be on that prestigious list. And then the other number, we're trying to increase AP access not only for all students, but also specifically to close the gap in participation for historically underrepresented groups, and that includes specifically students who identify as African-American, students who identify as Hispanic, and students who might be from lower socioeconomic backgrounds. I'm happy to report that since 2016, the year before, we began our Equal Opportunity Schools Initiative, we have 39% more students from one of those groups who are participating in AP coursework. During the same time, all students have increased by 12%, which means that gap is closing. We still have a lot of work to do there, but we do see progress on that front, and I continue to give credit to our schools because that's where the credit belongs. And I continue to give credit to our schools because that's where the credit belongs, our principals, our assistant principals, our counselors, our teachers, and everybody who's working with our students to continue to move forward in those areas. We also have lots of opportunities for students under Goal One. We've already mentioned multiple of them tonight and appreciate you recognizing our STEM coordinators and the great work that they're doing. That includes our STEM Saturdays program, STEM Fest, which is coming up. We have, we're in our second year of implementation of the Project Lead the Way curriculum in our elementary schools to give students hands-on experiences. We're also partnering with Parkway Rockwood Community Ed to provide a STEM experience for all students that goes beyond just the sixth-grade outdoor school experience, but to also have an opportunity for students to experience STEM provided by the Babler Outdoor Education Center through the Parkway Rockwood Community Ed so that all of our students can have hands-on experiences multiple times during their Parkway career. We also began the Early College Program last year with our first nine students participating. That's the opportunity for Parkway juniors and seniors to earn an associate's degree while they are still in high school. We're expanding that program next year to include 14 more Parkway students, so we'll have a total of 23 Parkway students participating in that program on the Wildwood Campus. We're also seeing lots of growth in experiential learning. We've seen an increase in choice program participation or applications this year by over 30%. So we continue to see our students wanting to access more and more opportunities to extend their learning beyond school and the school day. And we are continuing to work to create a representative curriculum. Dr. Matheson talked about our work around social justice, equity, and making sure that all students have their voice heard. And currently, we are working with all of our social studies teams to revise our curriculum, both our scope and sequence in secondary and at the elementary level to make sure that we are in fact representing all of our students and ensuring that they see themselves in the curriculum. Lastly, we continue to actually talk to our students and say, "How are we doing around these goals and doing our Goal One student interviews?" We, over the last two years, completed over 400 interviews of students. I know several of you on the board participated in those and we appreciate that. We see that our students really are saying that we are making a dent in becoming kind and caring and that they are seeing lots of opportunities in their school where those kinds of activities are represented. There's always work to do and we are seeing positives from that. And that concludes Goal One and now I'll hand it off to Amy Joyce around Goal Two.
Thank you, Kevin. Goal Two, attracting and retaining high-quality staff. We're really excited with some of the work that's being done in human resources. Here are the five measurable objectives and within your board report, we talked about our different points of data that we measure. So with measurable objective one, certainly we want to maintain being competitive in the industry. We know and talk about a teacher shortage, but we're happy to report that we have 100% fill rate on the first day of school. Sometimes it gets very challenging in some of the hard-to-fill areas, but our administrators and our recruiters work really hard. There are some other areas that we do have some challenges, achieving 100%, transportation, food service, and custodial. In some other areas where we are successful, technology, nursing staff, and our secretaries. And overall, 95% with all of our other operations staff, that would be some of our specialists at our admin building. So overall, we are doing very well and part of that has to do with our compensation package. Some of the other things that we measure with being competitive is we're looking at the number of days that it takes to fill some of our positions. So once we post a position, we track how long it is out there to the point of hire. And so as you can see, the number of days that it takes to fill an operations position is 75 days. Now that does seem very long. That's a few, if not four months. I'm sorry, about three months. But we might keep a posting out there open for a long period of time just to see how many applicants we can attract and we might be hiring along the way, so that number might be a little skewed. But with our certified staff, we are filling those positions within about 33 days. And that's pretty good from the point of posting, internal transfer, looking at all the applicants, getting them in for a screening interview, possibly a digital interview, interviewing with teams. So 33 days is pretty good. And then we have also in our applicant tracking system, the ability to look at the average number of applicants that we get for each of our positions. So for a teacher position, the average number is about 56. But I can tell you, and I think I put in the board report, that that is skewed because we do get a significant, we do get more applicants for an elementary position than we would say science. So we might get 100 applicants for an elementary position and 10 for science. So 56 is the overall average for all areas that we post for teachers. Again, you can see we have challenges in recruiting, transportation, custodial, technology. While our nursing applicant pool is low, we still have 100% fill rate and then secretaries' average number is 17 and all others is 11. We're proud that Parkway offers a very competitive benefit package. Patty Bedborough and Brian Whittle work with a great benefit advisory committee where they look at and examine the rates, the benefits that we offer. And we are number one in the area as far as percentage of spending against our operations budget. So we do use this as a recruitment tool when we go out to recruitment fairs and talk with them about those benefits because that contribution that Parkway makes does go toward your overall retirement earnings in the future. So it's something that we're proud of. Measurable objective two, staff diversity. As you can see, this is an area that is challenging for us. We have not made a lot of gains over the past few years, except in the area of administrators. I think that administrators, supervisors, and managers, that is probably the area that we have seen the most gain. With our certified staff, we seem to be spinning our wheels. As soon as we recruit in, we have folks that leave us for promotions or for some other school districts. So this is definitely an area that continues to be an area of emphasis for us. Again, one area that we also measure is the effectiveness of our staff and this is measurable objective three. So with our teachers, they are evaluated in five domains, 36 areas, and we have four ratings, exemplary, effective, developing, and ineffective. And you can see how our teaching staff breaks out. And with our administrator ratings, they are the same, exemplary, effective, developing, and ineffective. And you can see that over 95% of our administrators are rated effective or exemplary last year. With employee retention, this is measurable objective five, we overall have a very good employee retention rate. So for the 88.37 number, that represents all categories and all classifications of staff. With our teachers, we have a 94% retention rate, which is above the state average, as well as our probationary teacher retention rate. And I believe in the report, you referenced the state report as far as the number of teachers that even remain in education after three years and after five years. Those numbers are growing where teachers are leaving the profession. But we attribute our high retention rate, number one, to hiring quality teachers, but then two, supporting them once they come into Parkway. Our administrator retention rate, you can see, is very high. And then we don't lose too many folks for lateral moves outside of Parkway and then an overall operations staff retention rate is 81%. And then one thing that we do every year is we do surveys of our staff. And in your packet, there was a comprehensive database of all of the questions that we asked on our survey and how our employees feel about working in Parkway. And these are just a few of the questions and how our employees responded. You know, the greatest response came from, you know, there's at least one staff member that I feel safe and comfortable going to for help and that's at 96%. And I highlight that because we need to have a safe, comfortable work environment for all of our employees. So my challenge to the principals was find the 4% that we need to help, so figure out what they need for support. Last year, we also received the Top Workplace Award again and that is six consecutive years, so we're very proud of having that title for one more year. And then with employee retention, we also look at the exit survey data. This data only represents approximately 30 folks that filled out the exit survey. So we're going to have to challenge ourselves to figure out how we can have a better return or maybe do one-on-one exit surveys with employees that are leaving to gather this information. The other thing that is trending in HR is to do what's called a stay interview, not necessarily talking to folks when they're leaving, but find out why people stay in Parkway. And since we have such a high retention rate, hopefully we would see some of those themes about climate, culture, compensation, and benefits. And I know Dr. Beckner referenced professional learning. Within Goal Two, we do like to highlight what's happening within our Talent Development Department. And one of the things that is unique, he referenced the personalized learning for all staff, but even with our new teachers. So our new teachers come to us with different knowledge bases in different areas. And so it wouldn't be smart for us to train a new teacher in, say, technology if they are well-versed in technology. So they actually have an opportunity to select from the six areas as one strand that they are interested in learning more about. And so I compliment Kevin and his department for the work in that area. And with personalized, I know Kevin talked about this in Goal One and he referenced one and five and we had about 243 different proposals over the past year for personalized development. 17% of the certified staff participated and Amy Gurkin-Cotes did a survey and 100% of those folks said that they would participate again, so it's very successful. One other thing that we look at with professional learning is what is our staff doing outside of Parkway environment? You can see that we had 173 teachers apply for channel changes, which means that they are going back to school and they are getting either an additional master's degree or a doctorate or additional hours toward credit on the salary schedule and also to strengthen their craft. We also, in the board report, highlighted our operations staff. All departments participate in some type of professional development. This year, we had an operations conference in November and we had about 500 attendees and we had an overall satisfaction rating of 3.9 out of a five-point scale. So it was very well-received and very well-attended. And now I'm going to turn it over to Patty Bedborough, CFO, to talk about Goal Three.
Thank you very much, Amy. So looking at our measurable objectives with Goal Three, so Goal Three is everything that you ever wanted to deal with resources. We look at measurable objective number one and that's more of our compliance and our fund-balance-growth measurable objective. Our measurable objective number two is more the use of our facilities and the utilization of our employees. So great work was done this year with our boundary line adjustments along with measurable objective number two. And then number three is more our sustainability, not only environmentally, but also fiscally sustainable objectives that we are putting in place to ensure the continual fiscal health of the district. When we look at our first and foremost graph of our history and looking at our fund-balance growth, we know that during Project Parkway 2.0, we've seen a growth from the 14% range in fund balance to now, last year, we reached 20.19%. This is remarkable in a couple of ways. We did have to do less borrowing this past year. As a district, we run out of cash before the end of the year, before our tax dollars come in, and so we do have to borrow. And the borrowing has a cost. It has an interest cost for us. So our main goal is to reduce that borrowing completely and eventually have cash balances that lasts us longer periods of time that we're able to have interest revenue and longer-term investments as well. Two other factors that have helped, when we first looked at, when we were first entering the Project Parkway 2.0, we had dwindling fund balances in our capital projects fund as well, which are cash reserves. In order to grow that, we took some of our recruitment funding that we were able to obtain through the tax levy and we actually levied that into our capital projects fund so that we could grow that balance. So we have money in that fund for bus purchases, other capital projects, et cetera. The other fund balance or cash balance that we look at is our health benefit cash balance. So it's not part of our reporting on our basic financial statement, but it is included in our government-wide. But those cash reserves, when I first started in 2014, was about 3.6 million and now that is over 10 million. It's close to 14 million. So having the cash reserves in capital projects, in the medical fund, and in our operating funds has been essential for our lessening of our borrowing that we have to do. When we look at this, we also look at our audit. So in order for us to have an audit that's unmodified, meaning that they found no issues with it, no material weaknesses, it doesn't just take the CFO and the Director of Finance to make this happen. It truly makes, it takes every administrator and every Budget Secretary to help follow the rules, our policies, our procedures, our cash handling, et cetera, to make this happen. So it is the work of all that helps to make this possible. The other measurement that we look at is we're one of four school districts in the state of Missouri that actually have a AAA rating for our bonds. Our last bond sale was in the spring of 2019 with the $55 million issue for the first portion of our 2018 bond issuance. That marketed so well, we had a $4 million premium on that sale. So certainly there is a return on that investment with that AAA rating and we do want to work to maintain that. Measurable objective two, we look at our comprehensive staffing. Do you want me to kind of... As a summary with that, we had, led by Amy Joyce this year, we went through a very deep dive into all of our departments, looking for a possibility of $2 million in cuts so that we could then put in expenditures to help support our mental health initiative and our personalized learning. We've been successful for the most part. We do have funding for this next year. We've been able to obtain 700 and some thousand, 800 for next year. And then we believe we'll be able to identify the remaining portion of that for the year following when personalized learning comes further onboard as well. More details on that is included in the extensive report. When we look at our sustainability portion of our measurable objective three, our first clue is our energy usage. As you can see, many of our buildings do have decreased energy usage. We do have two buildings that had slight increases in energy this last year, Barrett's Elementary, which we're looking further into, and Hannah Woods. Hannah's was mostly due to their roof and having the ventilation system on more constantly in order to keep everything drier. As you can see, when we did the chiller installation at North High, we have a remarkable decrease in that energy use. We've adopted the Ashtray 50% Energy Savings Guidelines when we're putting in any new equipment, installing the new roofs. Of course, we're changing over to LED lighting as well. So all that plus... So all that, plus the energy conservation that we deploy as far as turning off lights when the rooms aren't in use, et cetera, all help to save the energy. Correlated with that is our energy costs. So very much similar lines on that, where reduction at almost all of our schools. You will notice that the admin center is the highest energy cost building. A big portion of that is our data center that is located at our location.
Kristi, do that.
He just leaned over and asked me, and I pulled him back. I'm very proud.
Awesome. We also measure our capital projects, not only their completion, but the completion on time and on budget. So it is very important when we're deploying construction projects, especially during the summer, that the buildings then are ready for use when it's time for school to start. The other important factor, of course, is to make sure that, at all possible, they can become on budget. So there's a detailed report within the multi-page report on each of the items. But just to comment on this current year, of the 13 projects started, we do have five that are still ongoing. So that would be the Welcome Center at South Middle, the ISC becoming the McKelvey Primary. So those are still being deployed, the elementary camera installation, our South High chiller, and also our athletic turf. So we do have a final completion on North High. We're almost complete at Central High, and then we have West and South High as well. Of those projects, only one is over budget, and unfortunately, that is our Welcome Center at South Middle. Most of those cost overruns have to do with our soil conditions that they had to remediate as we're building that new building. Another important part of our sustainability is our wellness plan. As Amy mentioned, our health benefits is a large portion of our expenditure budget. So we look at that as how can we control and maintain that cost? Certainly, we know, because we have an award-winning wellness program, having a wellness program that is accessible and easy to use from our employees gets our employees engaged in wellness activities, so hopefully to be healthier and happier at work. So as you can see, our engagement over the last several years has increased. Part of it is our reporting mechanism has increased as well, so our accuracy of that reporting is better. When we look at what our wellness engagements by building, it's hard to see on this slide, but the blue portion is our group activities per location, and then the orange is color is the number of activities or number individuals in individual activities per building. So our overall wellness events that are offered are just over 400 a year. So that includes each and every yoga class or Zumba class. The gym over here at Central Middle is open Monday through Thursday evenings for utilization, just as a few examples. One of our big accomplishments this past year is the opening of the Cary TC clinics. And as you can see, this slide depicts our first year of participation. It did not meet our overall goals for participation. We wanted a 25% participation rate, and it fell just under that. However, when we look at our last quarter of 2019, once our Claymont location opened, we already had 765 unique users, or 22% of our population. So we know this next year, so the year that we're in, we're going to actually beat our estimates on our participation in the clinic. So we had a 346% increase in that past quarter from the average quarter in that previous year, and much of that is accountable for the Claymont Clinic. It's located right by Cursmill and Clayton Road, so literally, it's within two miles from about 10 of our schools. So it is easier access, and the doctor there is phenomenal. We've had excellent feedback from all of our doctors as far as visits, and the more employees that go, the more employees that are engaged. They end up really liking the experience and everything else. So I will turn it over to Dr. Marty to do the close.
Well, I'd like to thank my colleagues in this work. They did an excellent job. And what I would suggest, and we'll just take a moment for board members to ask questions here, but we also know with an upcoming board workshop, if there's items that you want to go deeper in, as we put that agenda together for April, this would be an opportunity to do that because we can cover a lot of topics in greater detail when we have a little bit more time. But I want to thank them for their work here tonight. This quote I really like because, you know, a lot of organizations engage in strategic planning and writing mission statements, but oftentimes, those missions or those strategic plans end up on a shelf. I will tell you here, Parkway, as you know, as board members, and as we know from our work, we take the strategic plan, Project Parkway, very seriously. And since 2010, when this work kind of concluded after a number of years of forming the mission and the work, and now in our second generation and preparing for the third generation, Project Parkway has changed this district, and we do things differently. And we continue to look at our future. And again, that last portion of that mission, which talks about, you know, the future of our students and getting them prepared for what is unknown, but really thinking about everything from what careers they may be in, but also preparing our staff for our students and making sure that our facilities are up to the standard for good educational opportunities, but opportunities outside our facilities, and then also making sure our staff is well-prepared. So again, you saw a lot of things that connect back to student learning, and we're very, very proud to work with so many educators in Parkway. These are our leaders, but below them are so many other people engaged in the work of Project Parkway for so many years, and that work will continue. In the next couple of weeks, we're going to ask our community to begin weighing in through thought exchange to Project Parkway 3.0 as we initiate that work, and we'll use next school year to formulate the work that'll be our work from 2021 to 2026, the third phase of our ongoing work. We're very, very pleased that we have great community support and board support in the work of strategic planning and the Project Parkway work. So at this time, we'll entertain questions from the board. But again, if there's, you know, areas that you want us to go deeper in, so that could be an item for our upcoming workshop. Any questions for any of my colleagues or myself?
I will start out by just saying thank you to everyone who put so much time and effort into getting this report together. It's a wealth of information, and I know I've spent a lot of time, I know the rest of the board has spent a lot of time reviewing things, and that's not going to end tonight because we can't possibly get through everything in the amount of time that we've had it. But it's great information to have, and I think there will be some opportunities that we'll have to talk about some of these things more in-depth at our board workshop in April. I'll start off with just one question for Amy. You mentioned the teacher retention rate. We talked about that a little bit. Are we comparing ourselves to other districts, other surrounding districts in St. Louis as far as teacher retention rate? I know we're doing well, but we hear this looming crisis that we could be facing in the forthcoming years, that we're going to be short on teachers. And obviously, we're trying to keep teachers here and keep them in Parkway, but are we doing as well as other school districts? Are we doing better? Could we be doing better than we are?
To give you an exact number, to compare us to neighboring school districts, I don't know what their number is. But I can tell you that we are doing better than rural Missouri. We're doing better in, I would say, that probably like the city of St. Louis or the city of, like Kansas City in rural and suburb, I'm sorry, can't even think of the word I'm thinking about. But there are certain areas that have challenges in recruiting. So as I stated, right now, we are not seeing the crisis hit Parkway, but in certain areas that are hard to fill, we came very close last school year not having a highly qualified teacher in the area of industrial technology. So we've had to change and shift what certification areas we are looking for, just to expand that pool. So I don't have the exact numbers, Jeff, but compared to rural Missouri and other areas, we're doing well.
I'll just make one comment that I came away from with the teacher recruitment, retention, compensation matter. At the MSB Legislative Forum, the message there was every school district needs to have a Grow Your Own program. And I'm proud to see that we have a teacher strand in Spark, but that from a public society standpoint, we need to elevate the teaching profession higher than what we do here currently in the United States. We're not talking and counseling students enough to go into the teaching profession. And therein lies some of the dilemma that we've, according to some of the Desi's stats, we've seen a decline by about 21% over the last three years of people going into teaching as a profession. Culture and climate have a lot to do with that, and we heard that a lot about from our legislators with charter schools. Culture, climate, and achievement are the big factors behind why people want to go into charter schools. So that's where our public education finds some challenges. So with the Grow Your Own program, we could talk about that more in detail at another time, too, but I think we're on a good start with Spark. But it seems like we could go a little bit further with that to help students get into the teaching profession, to help us in the future.
Absolutely. And I'm really glad that at the state level, they are actually starting to have conversations about teacher compensation. And I think that the state needs to put, you know, the money where their mouth is to do something about it, because with the current funding formula and the way that things, you know, work, we can't support it ourselves. So we need to push and continue to have conversations. That's, I think, one of the driving reasons why kids do not go into education, and because they can walk out of college and make $50,000, and the state minimum is $30,000. And, you know, when you take a percentage out for retirement, which is required by law, you know, a lot of our teachers sometimes have to pick up second jobs. So it's, I mean, that's the reality of it right there. And I think, too, the perception piece of education, it's not a nine-to-five job. It's a 24/7, and it's all summer long, and it's planning, and it's evening. So, you know, the perception of teaching needs to change.
Yeah, I agree. And just the last comment, I'm proud to say that I attended the very first Project Parkway meeting in 2010 as a parent, and I thought, how could you not be a part of this as a parent in the district? I just, I am a huge supporter of Project Parkway and just admire that we're going to years 11 through 16 now on this because that's just remarkable. I think one thing that we could, would behoove our district, if we can get this report to our legislators that represent the Parkway School District, to show them, yeah, I know we're going to have a government relations meeting coming up, but we have, we know who all of our legislators are, we could get this report to them. I think it's a remarkable achievement, and I thank everybody for all the hard work. I mean, the data that is in here is phenomenal, and I don't know if all districts keep this kind of data or not, but I think it really is a mark of excellence for our district if we could share it more widely.
Bonnie Dickerson sending legislators something almost every day, we might as well send them this, too. We're really trying to do our job in promoting public education and the work we're doing. So good idea.
I just want to echo my colleagues in praising the work that you guys, that went into putting this presentation together and assembling all of this information. Particularly, like, it's very approachable and digestible, the way you convey this information to us. As board members, we have a number of responsibilities, but one of them is to be an advocate in the community, and your work makes it easier for us to fulfill that obligation. I also want to praise Patty. I've been a school board member for almost two years now, and I feel like I've, every presentation Patty's ever done, she's included the fund balance graph. So, well done.
That's my favorite graph, too. Anyone else?
I'll just start a quick comment into just the fact that in my work job, I get exposed to a lot of other school districts. And look at these stats up here, it's the reason why we moved our family into Parkway. As a parent, I'm proud of it. And I'll say, too, as a Parkway school board member, going to other events, other districts around us, where are you from? I said Parkway. It's a pretty big deal. It's, I almost feel kind of bad about it in some ways because a lot of challenges are out there at the school districts that we don't have here. We have a great staff. We have a great teacher base. We have great students. We're doing really well. And I think it's a part of pride we need to have, too, here in Missouri in general, and the fact that we have it pretty good.
I just want to say, as the Law Dad, same line, Aaron Schulte and I are presenting to Ed Plus, the superintendents, on Friday, our mental health task force plans and some of the implementation. Greg was going to do that, but he's going to be at the St. Louis Community College for him, so we kind of split up. But to your point, I think a lot of people are looking to us in terms of leadership and work we're doing. Well, thank you very much. I want to conclude by, again, thanking my colleagues and, again, Dr. Watson. Dr. Watson is one of her major responsibilities, deputy superintendent, to lead the strategic plan work, Project Parkway, does a very good job. These folks know she's constantly, she's watching, so Chelsea, thank you. So her work is key. When we started this work, first Desi Kirchhoff, and now Chelsea have really been the motivators, the key around the communication, certainly emphasizing some consistency in reporting and making sure we're on target and meeting those expectations. So I want us to thank Chelsea. She's not here tonight, but we'll keep her in our thoughts, and she is tuning in. So thank you, Chelsea, and thank you for all your leadership to make sure we all are on target and continue that great work. And again, thank you, board, thank you, colleagues.
Thank you all. Now may I have a motion and a second to the Board of Education call for a special meeting at 5:00 PM on March 4th, 2020, at Parkway Central Middle School?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next anticipated closed session will be held on Wednesday, March 11th, at Central Middle School. Details of the closed session will be posted within 24 hours of the anticipated meeting. We will now move into closed. So may I have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you all for your attendance tonight. See you next month.